I don't want to forget to start that again, even though we don't need to record this part of it.
Jennifer, you at the helm again.
Am I?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh. Grant, are you gonna attend in here or from your office?
You know, I think just so we don't get weird with our noise thing, I'll be in here for like this first little part and then I'll see you in like two minutes.
Okay, um, let me pull up the agenda if I may. The agenda and share my screen. How's everybody doing tonight?
Much better.
Pretty good, thank you.
Good. Again, I apologize for getting in the agenda out so late. Jim and I are still sort of transitioning, so. See. Here's the agenda. I think hopefully I can figure out how to share my screen. I will be honest, I am a Zoom newbie. We used a different platform where I came from, so I'm still learning. Is there a way? Yeah, there you go. So, um. I guess is the chair. Yeah, we're all, are we all here? I think we're all here.
No, Michael Wojlak is not here. He had texted me saying he couldn't sign him, and I told him to try again, so. Hopefully.
I had a requirement that I had to sign into Zoom first before I could get on the call, which I'd never had before when joining signing stuff, so I don't know if he was having the same. Situation or not.
Meeting, the link doesn't seem to work. But Jim, you're in here, aren't you?
Me? Yes.
Yeah, you just, I just got an email from you.
Yeah, yeah, that was a few minutes ago.
Okay, well, we couldn't, yeah, alright, um. I. See if I can send this to. I don't know what to tell him, um. It doesn't look like he's waiting to get in, so.
I had to log in, like using my email. I don't know if he's tried like logging in if he has a Zoom account, but that's what only, that was the only thing that let me.
Hmm.
In.
That's straight, did everybody else do that? You couldn't just go through the link that was in the agenda?
Right.
The link worked for me.
Link worked for me.
Okay.
I went through Google and finally got in.
Gmail, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I'm thinking too, there was something about. That, that was new.
I don't know what to say. Let me try resending it.
Want me to try to send the link to his phone? Let's see, I might have.
Would you maybe do that? I don't have his phone handy. Sorry, and the. Person who I could get it from Faith is not here. So. I'll work on my technical skills before the next meeting, so you guys don't have to go through this. She was the one that helped me set up this link, so I'm not sure what the difference was.
You know, the only thing I'd offer here, Jen, is maybe we, maybe we could just have him call in on the, the call in line if. If he can't otherwise get on his.
Okay.
Yes, I know that sometimes when you set up the meetings in Zoom, you can either choose like passcode or waitroom or login. There may have just been a. Like a security choice. Made, I think usually we use the waitroom feature.
That was supposed to be on there. Again, Faith said, don't uncheck anything, so I didn't uncheck anything, but let me, just give me a second. I need to pull up the emails so I can just resend it without having to look through all of this. Okay. For.
I tried texting it to, texting it to him.
I'm gonna pull this up now. Emailing him that call in number. Wait a minute, why is this giving me two different meeting IDs? Uh oh.
I used the one that was on the agenda with good success to get here, so I'm happy to read that one to you.
Two nine six seven, right?
Yep, that's the one.
Yep, that's, I don't know where the other one came from.
I'm in anyway.
We're gonna.
One of those days, Jen, don't worry about it.
I'm sorry, I just want to wake up tomorrow and luckily it'll be another day. Start fresh. That's good. Send this to him. See if we can get this working. A waiting room, here we go. Just make a noise when it pops up, but I think this will work. Hi, Michael. Can you hear us and see us?
There he is.
Yeah. Sorry about that, guys. I'll double check with Faith to see what maybe I did wrong when I set up the meeting. She was standing there, but I must have checked something.
Alright, well, here we are now. If everyone's here, we can get.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, great, we're all here. This is the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two Livingston, Montana zoning commission meeting, monthly meeting. It is five forty-six P M. In attendance is Wendy Weaver, myself, Michael DeChellis, Deborah Monahan, Michael Wojlak, and our guests tonight are Grant Giger, the new city manager, and Jennifer Severson, the. Barely new Livingston planning director. So, thank you all for coming tonight, and let's get started on. The meeting. We have an agenda that Jennifer sent around. I would think to reorganize it just a little bit and bump up the approval of past minutes to the top of the list. It's nice to get those out of the way, if that's alright.
Did everybody get them? The reason I didn't put it on there was because I didn't have a copy of them when I sent out the agenda, but if everybody's seen them, then I, we can approve them now.
Um, you sent them around again?
Uh. Yeah, Michael sent them. I sent out the agenda, so I left it off to do in January, but I don't see why we can't just do it now for the November minutes.
Right, as everybody had a chance to look at those. Or do we need to throw them up on the screen? We have both the October. And.
Did we, did we not approve the October minutes in November?
I thought we did, because I have a revised version of the October minutes.
Okay.
Must have changed something.
One has been revised.
Yeah.
The November one to. It is. Um. And, right, so I have the November eighth meetings minutes here. Has everyone had a chance to look at those?
I believe so.
Alright, anybody see any errors or emissions? No, can I get a motion for the floor to approve the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two zoning commission meeting minutes?
I move to approve the November eighth meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor of approving these minutes, A I?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Okay, December, is that it then? November eighth? Do we have an additional one?
That should be the minutes. I will say I haven't seen a copy of the October twenty-fifth meeting minutes. Um. I think you guys have a special meeting, but I don't know that staff was there, so I don't know that it was a public meeting.
I also didn't, wasn't there, and I have not listened to the recording to write those up, so I will have to do that.
Okay, well, and you know what? You can send those to, if there's a recording, we want to be able to help you out and do this, so I can draft them and send them to you to finalize, but was, do you remember if Jim was at that meeting?
Jim Woodall?
Yes.
Hmm, um. Don't remember.
Okay, I'll look through, I'll listen to the recording, and then, Michael, if you're okay, I'll reach out to you with, I'll send you a draft or whatever to look over, give me a day or two, and we can approve those in January, if that works for you guys.
Sounds good, thank you.
Sure.
Alright, well, great, thank you very much. Um, alright, um, then, do we have, we do not have any public here. Ordinarily, we open the meeting to the public in case there's any zoning related items that somebody wants to discuss. There's no one here on the Zoom call today, so we'll pass by that. So, next on the agenda is the introduction of Grant Hager, that the new city manager. Grant, welcome aboard. I'm sure this last month's been up to your eyebrows and learning new stuff. Would you care to introduce yourself to get a little of your background? And then maybe after that, we can have a little discussion on the relationship that you perceive between the zoning commission and the city.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank, thank you, everyone, for having me, and more importantly, thank you for serving on, on a volunteer. Of, of the, the city. I, you know, Jennifer and I are getting paid here to be here tonight, and I understand and respect that no one else on the call is, and you are taking time away from your, your family and friends and other things that you could be doing, so I am thankful for that and, and your service. A, a little bit about me, I am recently moved over from the city of Ketchum, Idaho, and I served as the Director of Finance and Internal Services there for about five years, and I, that was just merely my latest stint in government. Got into the public sector back in two thousand six, October, two thousand six, October thirtieth, two thousand six, and so it's, I've, I've had a lot of stops. I've, I've done a lot with transportation. And, and a lot with municipal government, both inside of municipal government and working with municipal government from the state and regional government side, and so. I'm very excited to be in Livingston's fantastic community, and, and, you know, I guess I'll, I'll jump into maybe the, the, the second part, because I think it's a nice segue here of, of your, your thoughts for about the discussion of. How I see the, the city and, and zoning, working together, you know, I, and I, I've said this to a, a few of the other boards and commissions of the city that we have, I. My top priority from my commission is to implement the growth policy, and I think it's a great document, and, and I'm a little bit regretful that, you know, the, the community effort was, was put in, and the, the, the document, you know, was approved in June of two thousand twenty-one, and, and somewhat sat on a shelf after that, and so. Jennifer and I both don't really like a, a plan that sits on the shelf. It, it's pretty worthless at that point, and so it didn't take much convincing when I asked Jennifer if she wouldn't mind. Breaking down that table twelve point one, the implementation matrix, into a spreadsheet, and her and I have been working on that spreadsheet for the last few weeks, and basically what it does is it takes the three hundred and seventy or so growth strategy or strategies, goals, and objectives. Within the, the growth policy lines them all out, and then we've identified internally who, who, who the, the department lead will be, and then also we've kind of defined who the, the, the relevant supporting advisory board or committee of the city would be. And, and also some of our external partners, who, who they may be for some of these different goals, strategies, and objectives, and, and so in January, we will do kind of a more public rollout of, of the growth policy implementation. And, you know, we'll start that at the commission level, and then these, these three hundred and seventy or so items, you know, they're all time, time defined within the growth policy as short, medium, and long term, and, and also continuous. And so we will take those items down to their relevant board and committee of cognizance, so to speak, and, and then start to run kind of that public engagement process on, on those items at each board slash committee. And, and that, we envision that process, like I said, rolling out kind of January, February, March of two thousand twenty-three, and, and so, you know, what, what, what that means, you know, specifically for, for zoning is. As I looked at it, you know, that, that three hundred and seventy, I think preliminarily, Jennifer and I, I have identified somewhere around thirty to thirty-five that seem like they're going to involve you folks in the zoning world. And, and really, you folks have some of the, some of the weightier and, and more meaningful items in there, and, and so, you know, quite honestly, you know, one of the, as we read the growth policy, one of the key. Strategies there is to align the, the growth policy with the zoning code, and, and so it is. The top of our mind and, and one of our top priorities to review the zoning code and, and make sure it aligns with the growth policy, and so that is going to take a, a bit of work from, from you folks, and, excuse me. You know, there's, there's also some comments in there about the. The, the overlay districts, the, the gateway district that, that I know you folks intended and hope to do some work on this evening, and, and so I, I, I think there's, there's also some zoning related to, to mobile homes and manufactured homes, some, some cleanup work to do there that's called foreigner growth policy. And, and a number of other items, and so, you know, I, I think this, this board is going to be one of the busier ones over, over the early part of two thousand twenty-three, but. The good news is that, that Jennifer and I, I've been having a similar conversation with a number of different boards and committees, and, and basically, you know, the, we recognize that, that you folks are all volunteers, and just as Jennifer said, that she would be happy to. Do the minutes, you know, that, that really is kind of emblematic of, of the, the approach that we were taking across all of our volunteer boards and committees, to try to get you folks out of the work creation mode and, and more into that, that policy realm where, where I think that, that you folks belong. And so, you know, in, in spite of what we may have shown here tonight, you know, we will, the, the city will offer our boards and committees a little more technical support and, and also help in, gotcha, Jennifer, and, and in creating the, the agendas and the packets. And, and like I said, kind of taking some of that work creation responsibility off of you folks, and so, you know, the, the goal of that really is, is threefold. One is to make, make your process just a, a little bit easier from, from an administrative standpoint for you folks, you know, we. We've got the city commission and the processes and the software that we use to support that board, and in my experience in other places. You know, there's, there's some sense to just standardizing that process across all of our boards and committees, and so we will do that, and, and so you'll see some kind of process changes that, that hopefully will be easier, and like I said, threefold. One is to make things a little bit easier for you folks. The second is to kind of increase our compliance and adherence with, with open meetings requirements of the state code, not that I think there's been any issues with this board, but just kind of standardize that across the board, and then third benefit really is, is to the public. You know, if, if a, a member of the public comes in today to a different board or committee meeting, they, they may have a vastly different experience just based on who's on that board and, and how that board is, is operating. Whereas if we are able to kind of standardize the, the process across boards, then, you know, if, if, you know, Mary Sue walks into a, a zoning board meeting, she's going to kind of feel at home if she's already been to, you know, a planning board meeting or a U R A board meeting, or, you know, parks and trails or, or trees. And, and so just to kind of standardize that experience, and so, you know, citizens know kind of what to expect when they're interacting with boards and committees, so. I have really talked a lot here, and so thank you for, for the opportunity, and I'd, I'd be happy to stand for any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Grant. Anyone else on the board have any questions for Grant? Um, I'm usually the one that. Oxymoron, which is funny because I'm not a very doctor fellow, but I would like to just mention to both Jennifer and Grant that I was looking through the two thousand twenty-one report to the city commission as I was writing up the current two thousand twenty-two report. What was kind of most interesting is that in nineteen or two thousand twenty-one, we focused almost exclusively on working on text amendments to the zoning commission and had relatively fewer zoning map amendments to consider, and then that flip flop this year where. We really spent almost all of our time working on text or on map amendments. We did miss four meetings this, this year. For a couple of different reasons, but. So, we, we've gone through the zoning ordinance quite a lot. We made a fair number of changes. The, some of those, a lot of those changes came from the staff, or Matthew Menard was terrific, both in terms of. Having a sharp pencil and in terms of supporting us in terms of ore, or kind of needs. But I do also think, even though we've kind of gone through most of it, and the, the overlay overlay is kind of the last thing or plate. I'm still relatively unsatisfied with the end document, and, and that's. Partially what I wrote in the draft two thousand twenty-two. Annual report in the anticipated work, we, there are some, I think some areas where the zoning categories could be clarified and, and sort of, there's an awful lot of overlap there that I think ends up. Being confusing. And some other measures such as that, so we're, I'm looking forward to in the next month, getting started on reconsidering some of that material. Um. That's, I think, all I'd want to say probably at this point. I think we're all pros in terms of looking at the zoning ordinance, and so we're happy to dive back in. Oh, the thing I might just kind of mention to you in terms of the growth policy, one. I, when I first recognized, we had a terrific public response to it. I think we had, I don't forget what, fourteen hundred or sixteen hundred people that, that were engaged at one point or another in that, which is totally phenomenal. But at the same time, there are whole segments of our community that are, are not represented in the document. We do need to kind of keep that in mind. I, I, I think the, the building and real estate community. Wasn't. That engaging, and then certainly the working poor and the poor, as usual, are totally invisible in our community, and they, they, they don't, they don't participate, so we really have to. Figure out ways that we can address their needs to in, in this document, and then the other kind of criticism I had that I wrote in while that, that document was being formulated is, it's, it's sort of, no priorities were really set, there's sort of a wish list of. Thousand different possible things to work on. And usually, you know, my experience working on committees is if you can put a couple of things on the table to work on for the area, you accomplish a lot more than if you've got a hundred. So I would, you know, as part of this process, the next month, I really hope that we can clarify and prioritize the work that, that we need to do. That's it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I, I couldn't agree more, whi- which is why, you know, Jennifer and I have been kind of taking the last few weeks and will take the next several weeks to, you know, kind of look at that, there, you know, the, the, the only real prioritization that exists in the growth policy is, as I've seen so far. Is, is just kind of the time, the short, medium, long term, right? So there's kind of, they've, they phased a little bit of the work for us within that document, and so I, I think we'll take that initial approach, but, you know, quite honestly, as, as Jennifer and I have talked, I, I do think there are some, some necessary text amendments that, that would be beneficial. And, and we, we've looked at bringing in a, a kind of a little bit of technical assistance from the outside to, to help us in that, that initial analysis to say, okay, if, if these are the goals of the growth policy, you know, where, where's that gap between the growth policy and our zoning, right? You know, and, and find those areas where we can work to address, address those, and, and, and one, you know, area that, that I left unspoken about in my, my early remarks that will have somewhat of an, an impact on you folks is the, the Related Housing Action Plan. Because, you know, that, the housing, as I've made the rounds and had the opportunity to meet with a number of community members, housing is the conversation that, that keeps coming up, and, and while there are certain things that, that we'll do kind of in, in U R A land. And, and kind of in, in other areas, there certainly, I think, are some opportunities to use the zoning code to, to implement some elements of the Housing Action Plan, but of course, there's going to be a large community dialogue involved in that, before, before it comes to you folks for, for consideration and action, right? And so, so, yeah, I, I, I'm respectful and aware of, of overwhelming our volunteer board and committee members, and I certainly don't want that to be the case, but, but I think, I, I think you folks will probably find it pretty fun if, if you like zoning as, as much as Jennifer and I do.
Great, thanks. Alright, any response to that from the board?
No, I'm not laughing at you. I'm just laughing at that. That's kind of weird that. No, but it's.
It wasn't asked about.
Like zoning, not many people do.
Yeah, I know, you can laugh at me about that. It's cool, don't worry.
Um, I have a kind of a. An unrelated question. Jennifer, I noticed on the city's website. You were like. Excuse me. Listed as. Listed as the planning director and then Jim Woodall was. Under you in terms of the building department, I'm just sort of wondering sort of what the structure. Of the the planning department is currently, how how do you organize?
Yeah, Jim actually doesn't report to me, I'm 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 the planning director, I, right now, I am the only person in the planning department, they've sort of split it out. And Jim is the building director and he has Brad Hefz works under him. So we just have planning and building and we're separate and Jim was covering for the planning app part of it while after Matthew left, but now we've sort of separated it out. We still work together, but all the planning stuff is is coming to me. So right now, there's just one of me. Yeah, but you know, Jim, Jim is his own separate stuff, and so he probably will not, he he's not going to be at a lot of the zoning commission meetings anymore. Simply because a lot of the text amendments or map amendments were looking at adjustments to the zoning code. You know, the zoning stuff happens before anything goes to get the building permit if it needs to go through review, so.
So he's in charge of subdivision review and building permits?
Nope, that'll be me, all the the land use review processes, so site plan review, subdivision reviews, anything to do. I'm I'm the city's planning director is the zoning administrator, I'm the flood plan administrator. So duties that I think sort of overlap with building when they were both together, now that the departments have been separated. Those will fall to me and Jim is pretty much strictly handling the building permit aspect of it.
Grant, first order of business is to hire Jennifer in assistant.
I I couldn't agree more, quite honestly, I I was shocked when I got to the city and I found out that we have a one person planning department. Because in in Ketchum, planning is is a thing and and you know, we. We we had a big team that was dedicated to it and, you know, quite honestly, we were under lawsuits, we were on my five years there in Ketchum, under land use issues. And it's a bit of a different community, but I'll say, you know, we've gotten served twice on land use issues in my, you know, month and a half here as a city manager. And I think that speaks volumes about this community and where this community is headed. And so, yeah, I I couldn't agree more, and I think in the short term, I kind of mentioned that we'll bring in some outside help to help with this zoning review. But but, yeah, my top priority and budget is is looking at Jennifer's area.
Yeah, thanks, it's it's definitely, I think, I think we'd like to sort of. Get a better understanding of of kind of what's going on, what the needs are, and and so also that we have a better grasp of how we move forward. And to implement the growth policy and then figure out how another staff person can help us with that, like Grant said. I already actually spoke to some people at the state that work with the Community Technical Assistance Program. So we're seeing if there's some way either through technical assistance or there are also some some small planning grants. That will help us review our current municipal code. Against the growth policy and try to better align it so that our code supports the growth policy, that's how it's supposed to work, right? We've got this great growth policy and as you probably have realized, a lot of our code does not support. The the goals and strategies and ideas in the growth policy, so that's kind of a main priority. Hoping to get some help from the state, there's also some. Some other ideas I'm looking at because I just, I can't do it all by myself, but yeah, we we realize that that we may need to bring somebody else in. But for now, I'm just going to work extra, extra, extra hard.
Okay.
I guess I would like to say is that I think of us as an engaged and kind of eager group. As far as our tasks are concerned, and so I don't think that we're afraid of rolling our sleeves up a bit. So while we appreciate you alleviating a lot of the administrative issues and getting us into process, I guess. I would just like you to know that. And also know that we're interested in engaging the public as much as we can as well in our process. I don't think we always know how to do that, but we're interested in it.
Maybe that's a a way that we can help support your function is is with engagement piece.
Yeah, great.
I would like to mention kind of three kind of big picture. Areas of work that. We might recommend to you to consider, one is that we are starting to work more seriously on the gateway overlay. Ordinance and or kind of first decision was that rather than us. Sort of doing the design work and setting the priorities there that we ought to have at least one public meeting to get those involved. The property owners and whatnot, to contribute to how they. How they might want the gateways to be improved. So we're thinking about that in January sometime. And so there's some coordination involved in that in terms of publicity and meetings and. The second thing that I might mention to you is that we have talked. And I've talked to other boards about the. Need or the feasibility of having a joint board meeting at some time, so that planning. And zoning and parks and trails and trees and maybe even Shannon Holmes and some people might stand. A day or a part of a day together, at least just comparing notes. And seeing what each of our priorities are to see if we couldn't kind of more understand. Needs that that fit into the whole and that we can kind of get a little bit more of a unified front. In terms of all of our work. And then the third thing, just to throw your way as a great big project that. Is kind of a five or a ten year plan project is to create a Park Street Improvement District. Park Street is our main thoroughfare through town, it's the main artery, but it's also the main bottleneck. And it it's the avenues on which growth and sprawl are likely to happen. It's where we have our traffic jams and it's pretty uniformly ugly. So there's a lot of opportunities there for improvements. But because the railroad owns one side of most of Park Street. It's a difficult problem to solve, so the thought thing here is that we put together a long term. Group it would take the, you know, the commitments of the city commission and the staff. But to sort of work out relationships with railroad and various partners that Montana D O T. And start to. On a more fine toothed tone, see where it would be possible to make improvements all along Park Street. So I'm talking curbs and gutters, pocket parks. Alignment of some streets, those kinds of things that would. Make it a better city.
Yeah, no, I I appreciate that, thank you, I and honestly, I'd love to hear more about. Some of your your ideas for for Park Street, I I will say. You know, being a a former railroader myself, I, of course, that was one of the first calls I made when I sat in this chair was. To our partners over at the railroad introduced myself and had some productive conversations with them and and I think that. When when they're able to, you know, fully retake control of the property and the M R L lease is over. Or canceled by the Surface Transportation Board, I think that they will, the the B N will have. A a little bit more opportunity and ability to work with the city, but they certainly seem like a willing partner in my. Initial conversations and you know, I I I would extend that to, you know, it's at the the Parks and Trails. Meeting, gosh, I guess that was two weeks ago now, it feels like. And 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 did some, you know, had some conversations with with some of their members about some improvements to Park Street more on the the bike. And pedestrian crossing realm and, you know, shared with them that that I've got some experience with, you know, whether it's high intensity crosswalks. With with, you know, kind of light up in the street or, you know, wayside light ups that that advise when a pedestrians there. I think there's a lot of room for improvement on on park and and certainly curb sidewalk gutter is included on that list. So, you know, what the mechanism is, whether it becomes some sort of improvement district or we can just kind of work within. The the confines of some existing mechanisms, I think, is a little bit to be determined. And and then, you know, kind of touching on the 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 gateway. And and kind of some of that public, public process, you know, I think that that is. That really is, the the public process, I think, is going to be very key to rolling out the the growth policy implementation. And and making sure that we're doing it all in a a coordinated way that that makes sense. To the community is 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 going to be critical, and so, you know, I I I do envision that there are going to be. Probably more than one public meeting on on the gateway, right? Because, you know, certainly property owners and and those folks are are critical to that process, but quite honestly, so is the entire community. And because it's everybody's gateway, even if we don't own the land, right? And so, yeah, I I think it's going to be quite critical to to ensure that whatever product comes out of zoning. Is is informed and and benefits from the input of of both property owners and the community and. And and frankly, I'll say that about about pretty much everything that's going to come out of of zoning. Because it is so impactful to the city and the development of the city and the experience, I think, that a lot of. Community members have, that that, yeah, I I I kind of said that a little flippantly, but I I do think that is one area where the city can really provide. Some support for you folks and and kind of help, you know, clearly you folks are 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 a passionate bunch if you're on the zoning board. Because that's that's one of the more difficult ones where where you're. Out in front making some decisions and 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 some recommendations up to the commission that that are impactful to the community and so. You know, we we'd like to 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 support you folks and and aid in that process however we can. And and I do think there probably is an opportunity for for some joint work sessions. At of of different boards and committees as we go through this this public rollout of of the growth policy and so. And it's already occurred to me, you know, it's one of the items in the growth policy is consider, you know, incorporating tree standards into the Gateway Overlay District, well. You know, that that's obviously going to involve the tree board, right? So I I I do think there's going to be a lot of opportunities for collaboration and 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 I'm I'm here to facilitate that as much as I can. So I I feels like I've talked for a long time tonight and, you know, I'm I'm happy for any other questions, but. But I I I don't want to keep you from your friends and families that, you know, much longer than I have to on a Tuesday night.
Okay, well, it's, I appreciate you coming tonight, Grant, it's good to get to know you a bit. And it looks like we should be able to form a good working relationship, I think. I'm getting excited about next year.
Great, good.
So I guess we'll let you go, you've certainly got family and a large workload to handle too, so. Why don't we call that quits in terms of introductory remarks and. Move on to our next item on the agenda, which is to review and approve the zoning commission annual report. Oh, I did send that around earlier. The first time with some date errors in it that I cleared up. Yes, here we go. So I I put together the draft of the annual report from the zoning commission to the city commission. Modeling on last year's report. As you can see, we approved ten zoning map amendments. I think I've got it all accurate in terms of which zone we designated. Each property to be under. And then we had one zoning text amendment, the sign regulation that we passed. So I think the big item for discussion might be the bottom part of this document. Most of which I've left in a cat light. Because it's material from last year that we actually kind of didn't get to, so. If we want to have a discussion at this point, that's probably where we ought to look. Does everybody have a copy of that document to look at?
Yeah, yeah, Chairman Barrett, can you hear me, I'm having. It's saying my internet's unstable, that's why I keep turning off my my video and sound. Alternately, but I can hear everything you guys are saying, I just had a quick question about something I I noticed. In in the draft that you sent out, the second draft, you may want to update, Matthew Menard was only here through the middle of March. And I believe Jim Woodhull also provided some support to you guys, so I don't know if you want to add that in there as well, just so.
I'm also not included.
Who's that?
Oh, yeah, that's Deborah.
Okay, sorry. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so then any other revisions or corrections? So it's it it seems to me. You know, based on Grant's discussion, we ought to, in terms of anticipated work, maybe we ought to. Move number two up to number one. In terms of review the recommendations of the growth policy and set priorities for the year, that probably should be at the top of the list. And then, second on the list would then be the gateway overlays. And then. Three. Revisit city zoning categories and maps, now that may also be a subset of. What Grant was talking about in terms of. Doing additional work on the or the ordinance, I don't know, or there may just be some other items that need to be put in there.
Jim, I'm curious to where we put the Housing Action Plan, if there's, if that's a separate set of work. If that's part of the city zoning category and map piece. I see you have the Measures to Increase Density, which I think is great, but I don't know if that's something that's more specifically related to housing or just looking over what the. Levers that we might have options to review from that Housing Action Plan.
Okay, that's great, no, I'll insert that into that. That paragraph is kind of a lead. In that area. And then I think the last, the final thing was this whole idea of a redesign of Park Street. That's, you know, I, you know, once again, it's a, it's a mouthful, it's a, it's a big thing to take on and is that sort of appropriate in this document? I sort of hoping to kind of get these. Try to evangelize a bit and get these sort of big ideas out there, that includes getting them to the city commission or. Just to keep them abreast on what we're thinking and hopefully get them to buy into the concept, so. Anything else in here that you might want to revise your up or downgrade?
I, I'm sorry, this is Jennifer, Commissioner Barrett, I had a question. The freeway commercial district, is that something that's identified explicitly in the growth policy? I don't recall seeing it, but I could be very mistaken, I've read a lot of stuff recently.
No, that's my own brainstorm. Couple related. In the background on it is, it just seems to me that the three freeway interchanges are a different animal than Park Street is. In terms of its function, in terms of its traffic patterns, in terms of the use. in terms of its function, in terms of its traffic patterns, in terms of the uses in, you know, all of that. And and I think in terms of zoning, we need separate categories there so that we can treat them, treat them separately. And and the question, one of the questions would be whether just having the gateway overlays is a sufficient method for handling that distinction or not. In other words, Park Street is, you know, is local commercial. It's largely designed around the local inhabitants of our city and county and their sort of daily uses. Whereas Highway 89 exchange out there, especially in the summertime, is 80 or 90% outside people passing through. So the commercial demands are going to be certainly the people, you know, the developers who would want to take on projects in those areas are going to be different. And it just, it just seemed to me that we needed, you know, giving or distinct geography. We needed to separate those two well. Anyhow, that's my thought.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks. I am, I'd like to look into that a little more. I mean, highway commercials, you know, is the most permissive zoning district we have. So you know, in some ways that that allows any type of, any sort of commercial development to be and residential is also allowed to be anywhere along the in those zones. So maybe it's, you know, I I sometimes I'm hesitant to apply more zoning base layer zoning districts. I feel like we have a lot already, but I think that could be something that you maybe, I don't know if you guys want to consider looking at it as an overlay on its own. I mean, the gateways are one thing. Maybe it's a different type of overlay through there. But yeah, that's something I I hadn't seen the freeway commercial before I saw your annual report for items on next year until today. So, yeah, if me, let me look at that some more. And if you have ideas on that, other than what you just talked about, if you guys have had discussions in the past, I'd love to see that that information, if it's in the minutes, then I'll go back at that just to get some
I give you some background on that either now or later. The other thing that I think should happen is that we should drop R2 out of the allowed uses under highway commercial. Before your time in the last few years, we've had a couple of large housing proposed out on the West End, and both of those got turned down. I think under the auspices of the growth policy that that people really did not want to see R2 development kind of expand out in that direction just because of the distance it is from the core of the city. So I think that's that's another thing we would want to look at. You know, whether R2 is appropriate in a HHC zone.
Something that just came to mind for me, and maybe I'm just not remembering what we've done with it or where it was left off, but we did text amendments for a design overlay area or zone. But I don't think that's been applied map wise to any of the areas. Like, I don't think there's been a zoning map amendment. Is that correct?
Was that for the large format retail?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess I'm wondering if that's something we need to apply somewhere. I guess I'm just, it would be something that Jennifer should look at along with you, Grant, just to look at what we did and see if there's, I don't know, some more movement that we should do with it.
Yeah, we did. We did spend a bunch of time on large format retail. We limited the size of large stores in Livingston to 40,000 square feet. And I think there was a trigger at 20,000 square feet where there would have to be a design review between 20,000 and 40,000. So I think that's what you're talking about, Deborah. But also, there is written in the current code a section of design review that would relate to the gateway overlay. And that all hasn't been implemented yet, but, you know, sort of that that would be the intent and the design overlay is that in addition to sort of prescribed ordinances, there would also be a design review process.
Yeah, no, I'd love to see the work that's been done done on that. You know, the community I'm coming from has a very robust design review criteria for every commercial building. And so, yeah, I'd absolutely love to see what's been done here.
That's what I was going to ask. Do you guys recall when that was done? And I can go back and look through the minutes, but I do not know of anything like that's that's been forwarded on to the commission, city commission. So that work, it definitely hasn't been implemented because it's not been approved as as a code update. So, yeah, if if, do you happen to remember when it was, I'm guessing 2022?
It was in 2021.
Okay, I'll look back. I'll talk to Jim, see if we can get ahold of of those documents and that information. And yeah, Grant and I can look through it. That's the first I'm hearing of it. And I definitely, you know, I, that's the thing is, I think, Grant and I both, we don't, we don't want you guys kind of working on things that then don't move forward. That's that's spending time that you don't need to be spending. And also for us, so I don't want to, and I certainly don't want to ask you guys to redo something that you've already done. So let me, let me look into that. If there's anything else pretty significant like that that you can think of, please let me know and I'll try to dig into our records and talk to Jim and and come up with that information and the background discussion so I can understand it better.
Yeah, I can certainly send you the 2021 annual review. I've got a copy of that, but it doesn't have any specificity in terms of what exactly what changed in in the zoning ordinance.
I don't believe there was a change in the zoning ordinance is what I'm telling you. I believe that there, there is no large format retail that I've seen in our zoning code, which tells me that it may not have gone through to the city commission. So if you have an on that, again, I'll touch base with Jim tomorrow.
Okay.
But yeah, if it's not in there, that means the code wasn't updated.
Well, I think we were all under the impression that it had been passed on the city commission and they had adopted it.
I will look into that. Yeah, and I'll look into that tomorrow. I apologize. Like, if I try to open Munich code right now, my entire computer is going to crash. I'm not sure why. But let's not do that. And I will definitely look into that tomorrow. So thanks for bringing that up.
Great.
Thank you. All right. Any other further discussion on the annual report to the city commission? I guess I will make the changes that have been suggested to date. Should I send it all around to all of you again with those changes? And then if you don't have any corrections, Jennifer, then we'll let you know and you can pass that on to the city.
That sounds good. Yeah. I'm looking at your link.
Yeah, that should be. That's what I have on my Google Drive for text.
Does I need to request access?
Let's see.
And you may see, I don't know why my Google Drive, it seems to be tied to my Hotmail account. So if you see Jenlyn underscore S, that's me.
Okay, try that.
Did you put another link in? Okay. Definitely get it from you, link to design guidelines. Yep, perfect. I will, as soon as we're done, so I don't crash the meeting, I'm going to actually download these, if you don't mind, and look through them. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then I'll also put them on our server so that I know where they are. Yeah.
Jennifer, do you know that the published zoning ordinances that are on the website, are they current and up to date with everything that has been?
Everything in Munich code should be up to date after the it was approved and the ordinance was passed, then the code language should have also been updated, not just the scanned ordinance. I can't guarantee that's the situation. I'm going to be looking at all of this. I think there's, like Grant said, there's going to be, I've already identified some small, some small code updates, but I think there's going to be some others, some of it's housekeeping administrative, just, you know, making sure everything sort of aligns. I've noticed we have some references in the code to sections of the code that actually don't exist. Things like that, but then some are much larger scale, you know, finding ways to, you know, really overhaul the code to support the growth policy. So I think we're still figuring out how we do that. I'm not a fan of spot code amendments, you know, scattered throughout, but it may be that we need to do some administrative ones upfront. And then more of the policy kind of larger scale ones moving forward. But, yeah, it should be, in a perfect world, the what is on Munich code should reflect any approved ordinances by the city commission.
And I'll throw out a stack of previous copies of.
No, don't do that. You're welcome to send them to me. I just kind of want to make sure. And again, I'm still, I think there was a different shared drive and some of the files got moved over to a separate planning drive. So we're still, I'm still working at a gym to make sure I'm not missing anything. Matthew pretty did a pretty good job of copying over his stuff. You know, sometimes we get busy and we're working off our own cloud drive versus in in the general server. So I just want to make sure everything's there. But if you have stuff that you're like hard copies, if you're talking about, or I'll be happy to come pick them up. I just want to make sure. Again, I hate the thought of of people working on something and then it just gets lost because we've gone through different staff and the transition. So I would hate for that to happen.
Well, I could also say, I think it's so great that we've got two new eyes on this document. I mean, we have been down in the weeds quite a lot. At some point, you gotta lose track of when things happened and what happened. And so to get some fresh eyes is going to be invaluable. So, thanks.
Oh, yeah, no, and I'm excited that you guys are so into have gotten, you know, into the weeds and have paid so much attention to code updates. I mean, that's really heartening for me to hear because not everybody loves code. We all like to say we do, but sometimes it's a bit of a headache. So it's it's very helpful when there are so many eyes on on the details, because as you know, code is all about details, you know, the the growth policy is the big vision and the code is the very detailed, it's regulatory, so it has to be right.
All right. Well, I think that's all, that's been a terrifically useful discussion. If there's no further discussion on the annual report, then I will make these changes to it and tomorrow, and I'll send it around to everybody. Okay.
Well, is everyone okay with me, once you all have signed off on that, rather than bringing it back in front of everybody at the January zoning commission, would you be okay with me taking what everybody's agreed to an email as the final version and taking that before the commission in January, the city commission? Are you guys all okay with that?
I I think, you know, if somebody's got a correction or an objection, they can voice that on email to you. But barring that, I think just the email approval should be sufficient in my mind.
And if you're all on board with that, then maybe you could respond when Jim sends out the the updated with revisions and just if you could one by one say, looks good, I'm good with this, then we can just do that as a soft approval to bring it to the January city commission, if everyone's okay with that.
Okay, that's great. Okay, well, any other business comments? Saying none, I'd like to pull this meeting adjourned. Thank you all once again and have a great evening. See you next month. Bye bye.
Thanks, everyone. And Michael, Michelle, I will, I will also draft minutes from this meeting, if you'd like, and then send those to you along with the minutes from October 25th, if I can find them and if I could find a recording and I'll send both of those to you to review, if that's okay.
Sure, I did take notes, but I'd be curious what you, maybe what your notes and my notes, how they're different.
Okay, if you want, yeah, like I said, I, yeah, I just, I'm trying to make it so that you don't have to spend time doing administrative stuff like minutes if you want. I'm happy to kind of take that on with you, sort of looking at it, adding to it. But I'm happy to do the heavy lifting to to give you back more time.
But hopefully, Michael, that'll give you a little more time to spend time thinking and commenting and
and reading code, obviously.
And thanks so much, everyone. I appreciate it.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Bye bye.